Because I thought if it created just a few jobs, it's worth it. Well, seven years later, not one job's been created, period. Not the first one. Now, we're being asked to spend $67,000 an acre for 33 acres to expand a park that no one's in. And while I'm thrilled and absolutely thrilled that we're getting the T-Cat school, this may be the best thing that ever happened for Bedford County. It appears or sounds like the majority of the 33 acres at 67,000 acre is going for the T-Cat school for it to be more visible. 67,000 acre is a high price for visibility. It's my understanding that we're getting the T-Cat school either way without doing this. Again, my opinion in the county, not the city of Shelbyville, but out in the county, I just don't think land's worth $67,000 an acre. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Smith, Brent Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just find it, I find it hard to believe that as a county we'd spend 60, over $68,000 an acre. I don't know of any business locally that's spent that much for any kind of property. And, you know, I did see, I saw the Dog and Pony Show that happened a couple of weeks ago concerning, I'm our industrial recruiter, and I mean no disrespect when I say that, but I never heard who's coming, who's coming to Bedford County. I know that there's some, you know, probably some disclosure that we can't talk about, but I'm willing right now to step behind that curtain and sign a disclosure because I want to vote for this, but I can't vote for this knowing that, you know, we don't, we don't know who's coming. We've got a bunch of promises, just like Commissioner Anderson just said from several years ago, but we just don't know who's coming and we don't know what kind of industry it is. Is it going to be clean industry? Is it going to be the kind of industry that we want here in Bedford County? Or is there going to be more low-paying jobs or we're going to pay a premium on this, on this property? And so I just, I just can't in good faith vote for this unless somebody's willing to pull me behind the curtain right now and I'll do it. And I'll sign a disclosure if I could just find out what kind of companies are coming in here. We talked about transparency, but there hasn't been a lot of transparency. There's been a lot of procedure, but there hasn't been a lot of transparency around who's coming to Bedford County. I'm a businessman. There's other businessmen and women on this commission and I don't understand, again, why these businesses aren't coming and speaking in front of, in front of the community saying, hey, look, you know, this is, we're a Fortune 100 or a Fortune 500 company. We're coming here. We're going to employ, you know, 40 people. Average wage is going to be 50 grand. We've got some senior management level positions. Those are going to be 120 grand. I'm not hearing that. So I just, you know, I just wanted to voice my opinion on this. I really hope this works out, but I just, I just, I just can't vote for it.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Julie Sanders.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One of the things, I kind of felt that way at first until, you know, Shane had spoken about the things that were required of the people that are looking at coming into the industrial park. And one of the things was having access from the front. And I think that was a huge, and Mr. Vic, you can probably clue me really spell it out exactly because I don't remember exact wording, but they said that if you, that was one of the big deal breakers for people is if you didn't have the direct access into the front of the park. And so I can see how that's very important. The other thing is I did a little research on my own and, you know, Newton Nissan, that's the dealership that's very close to this property. They paid $6 million in 2013 for 12 acres because it's commercial property and commercial property and residential is very different. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Everybody understands the motion and the second? All right. When your name's called, vote for or against, please.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Smith.
Pass.
Commissioner Vic.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers.
Yes.
Commissioner Julie Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ferris.
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
No.
Commissioner Gunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Castleman. Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Thomas. Thirteen yes, ayes, one no, one pass. Does anyone wish to change your vote before we go with that? Thirteen ayes, one no, one pass.
All right. Thank you for your report of confidence in the economic development that we're attempting to improve here in Bedford. And I want to invite each and every one of you to the very first ribbon cutting as soon as we can get that in front of us. All right. Next item on the agenda under Rules and Legislative Committee, Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement by and between Bedford County, Tennessee and the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee concerning the Commerce Business Park to amend membership of Oversight Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion and a second first, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Now, we're open for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to our interlocal agreement. Our bylaws allow for the appointment of a board seat. The 231 Board appointed Mr. Shane Hooper, our Economic Director. However, our interlocal agreement does not conform with the bylaws. This action that we take today in the interlocal agreement makes the bylaws and the interlocal agreement conform, conform together so that we can appoint Mr. Hooper to our board on the 231 industrial park.
All right. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none when you, well, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda, nothing to report in law enforcement under property and courthouse surplus, county clerk's office, it should have been in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Is there any, just Mark and Brian Ferris. All right. Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Next on the agenda under Finance, Financial Management Committee, we have some surplus as well listed for you and should have been in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Any discussion or questions, clarification? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. So we're lucky tonight that it's quarterly report night. Not everyone could be here, but I wanted, I need to change it up just a little bit. The trustee would like to go first. She's normally last. I think that's appropriate. So if you'll step right up, we'll get you right in the system.
I'm going to make this quick. Well, I'm going to try to make this quick. I did try to, I looked back through my report and I tried every way I could think of to try to number this, but because most everything in here are all different reports, I can tell you the very first page is the summary. The next 53 pages is more of the financial report. It breaks down the whole detailed report. So that being said, we can move forward to the current property taxes unless anyone's got any.
Tonya, let me interrupt you just a minute. I've got three different packages from you and I'm not sure which one we're even looking at.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Thomas. The first two reports is that year-end TCA law requirement. The two separate reports, one is the assessor changes and deletes and the other is delinquent taxes and double assessments. I did not put that in the trustees' package just because it is a large report, but that is what the other two reports you have. I don't know if you remember last year, year-end, that is required by the TCA law. So that'd be a little separate from just the trustees' report. So as I said, you know, we do, in the quarterly report, we always do like the monthly report, which is basically just a short summary. But at the year-end, I do a full detail. This will show everything done throughout the full year. It'll have the certified copy with our county clerk, Donna Thomas, and everything that happens in that year will be zeroed out. So those are the 53 pages in the first of the report. Where I want to carry you now is to the tax, current property tax collection. So if you'll bypass 53 pages, you will get to a graph. It's a full page that will show you the current, the prior, and the clerk and master. So once you pass page 53 of 53, it'll be the next page. It'll have orange, gray, and blue. It'll say property tax collection comparison, and I'm showing you 13 years of the property tax collection. Okay, got it? Okay. I highlighted the last two years under the 2.66 tax rate. The increase of collection on the current property tax is 263,548.86. That is a 1.8% increase. The increase on prior years is 3,255,561 from the previous year. That's a 55.19% on the prior years. This year, we turned over less over to clerk and master at 63,841.09 from previous years. That's 25.68% in decrease that we turned to the court. The next six pages, and the reason I'm pointing out the graph because actually the next six pages is nothing more than the printout of the current prior, the credit card E-check collection, basically a report that's turned over to the clerk and master, and then the physical year report, this report is done to close of the year. So that all ties in with what that graph will show you, just a more detailed report of each. We're going to move on to the investment pool, the LGIP. That is the report on our local government investment pool that shows the average earning rate, and that is transferred to the debt service, 151. The next page, you will see the grant account with the LGIP. Our next report will be the mixed drink from the city of Shelbyville. Again, at the year-end, I give a full detail of the breakout, how it's received. Your very next page will show the full year collection, how it split out county portion at 141.50%. Our next report will be sales tax for the year. We're up $1,196,531.78 at point, 8.08%. This will show you a 24-year comparison. The next pages is nothing more than it goes back to that graph. All the information's on that sales tax collection comparison through the years is these next pages that shows you the split. Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Quick question. Can you tell me what the breakdown is on the sales tax between the city and the county? Meaning if, let's say it's $10 in collected, just give me a rough ballpark, what the city gets, what the county gets.
The reports that I get, and I can show you, I'll be glad, while you're looking at it, is how this report comes from the state and it's wrote down between the cities, the Bedford County City, Bell Buckle, Normandy, War Trace, and it does that. As you see, the next page will show you the 50 split. The right side will give you the net collections. That's what we work off of. And that question's a good question because if you'll follow through past these reports that I put in from the state, the Department of Revenue, this is the third page from the last page of the report. This online, the first one is online internet sales tax collection. Your next page, this will probably explain, Commissioner Anderson, what you're wanting on numbers. This is the same as the graph. The only difference is the sales, it's actually a sales tax summary. If you'll look to the right, 2019 through 2020, it will show you each month that in total is 16 million. I don't have glasses on. Three, six, 30, 611. That number goes back to that next collection, net collection on what we receive from the Department of Revenue. If you'll look to the far left of this report, because I don't have June report yet, so I can't close that full year 21, you will see 2020 up to 2021 through May. Without June, like I said, we're not there, but I can, I am showing you that number, and again, that number will match the net collections from the front of that report, and we are at 6.21%. We are ahead. The last page of the trustees' report, Commissioner Thomas asked for this report and he asked that it could be just reported at the end of the year. It's the, it's allocated to 101, and this is the Archives Records Management Fee, and it shows you the different departments that actually goes from, this is where the fee comes from. And you'll see to the far right, the total of each department and then your total amount by month and then the year.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Is that everything you want?
Yes, ma'am. That's very good.
I'm going to end with the tax relief. We, as if everything, we've been told, we've not got the full clear on our side for the tax relief program, but with our 1.9652 tax rate, it, our numbers for, is our figure is $143 per elderly, 860 for our veterans, it's 100%. And the limit is up for $31,190 on the, they have increased the limit for the elderly
All right. Questions? Commissioner Smith, Brent Smith.
Since things are a little different financially now, it's no, no, no big secret. We talked about maybe a tax freeze for the elderly a few years ago, and that obviously didn't make a lot of sense there. Do you think that there might be a possibility for that moving forward at all?
I could tell you it was very seriously looked at. We spent probably a summer, some before last for the pandemic, exhausting every resource. I actually went through 95 counties. I give the comparisons of the relief to the freeze. I think that's something that it's not my call on it, but I will certainly give all the information that you need to further study on it. I know that some counties do contribute to the tax relief and some do match the tax relief, but from the, the study that I did with the other trustees, it seems that the elderly benefit more toward the relief when the cities or the county will do some, give some or match.
So do you think it's worth looking at again or not?
That's not, I don't have an opinion on it. I'll do exactly what I'm asked to, give you all the information you need to make that decision.
Just with what you've seen currently, I mean, do you, do you think it would be, you know, financially worth looking at again?
I would have to look at the numbers.
Okay.
I mean, I have to look at our current time numbers. I mean, that's been year and a half ago, two years, so we definitely need to look at the financial side of the numbers.
Let me ask you one more quick question.
Mr. Anderson.
The limit here, well, one, I think the state sets this limit. So that $31,000 is not something we're setting or any other county. That's the state setting that limit of income, correct?
Yes. Income, yes.
So that's why I don't think maybe the freeze thing works because the income's set. We really couldn't change that. Like, we couldn't raise it to 40,000. We have to go with what they say.
This is a state program. The trustees' office just takes care of the program for the county, but we have no say-so on what.
Is there a limit to income on the veterans of the same as the elderly at 31,190 or is that different for veterans?
If the veteran is 100%, and that language has to come from VA because what is 100% is a lot of different language there. If they qualify through the VA to be 100%, they don't, there's no limit on the veterans.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
When you say 100%, you're referring to disability, being disabled through the veteran system, correct?
Yes, yes. There is the, there's the elderly, the veterans, and the disabled, the disability. So we have three different directions to go. If they don't qualify as a veteran, which with veteran, there is no income cap, and like I said, right now, we're looking at $860 for the veterans.
Thank you for your report. All right. Next, Clerk and Master, and I don't believe he's present. And after that, we have listed Circuit Clerk, I know, and Driving School. I know her report is available to you, should have been in your, on the desk or in your packet. Don't believe she's present. How about our county clerk? I believe she's here.
She's here for what is worked tonight. Okay, I've got the, just the breakdown for the year. Now, this is for 2021, the fiscal year, okay? You can see transactions there. We did a total of 74,880 transactions, which is up 6% over last year. Just to let you know how that's growing, the year I took office in 2014, that year we did 54,000 transactions. So that's a big jump. The total money collected through our office was 5.7 million, which was up 968,000. That's the total collected, so almost $1 million, which is 21%. The revenue that stays in Bedford County, you can see down there, that is, that total was 812,000. Last year's total was 668,000, so that's up almost 150,000 or 22% over last year, what's staying in Bedford County. Part of that is hotel motel tax. You can see there, the total so far collected through June 30th, we started that in January, in January, as you'll remember, although we didn't collect on the January occupancy tax until February. So we run a month behind as far as reporting. But what we've collected so far through six months is 13,333. That's running anywhere from 25 to 2800 a month through our office and through what we get from the state. Because if you'll remember, short-term riddles that go through VRBO or Airbnb, they, the, they, Airbnb or whoever that company is they go through, they collect directly from the customer, submit it to the state of Tennessee, they take out their fee and then submit it back to us. So they run, I would say, two months behind. So we're, it's going to be more than the 13,000 every six months is what I'm trying to tell you because we're running a little bit behind on collecting that. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
And I would assume these were the slower months when you think about January, February, March for Airbnb. So we may, this may pick up or tick up just a tad. We sure hope so. As you remember, when we passed this, we specifically designated this to economic development. So we'll track that to see where we go. Any other questions for? All right. Thank you for that report. Next, Directors of School. I know she's present. Dr. Garrett.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for passing our budget. In that budget was a raise for our classified folks. We had so many empty positions last year, and what we learned with COVID is that we needed those folks. We needed our cafeteria workers. We needed our custodians. So I wanted to personally thank you for doing that. I've received so many emails, people stopping me, people coming to see me. It will make a difference in the lives of our citizens and our employees. So thank you so much for that. I also wanted to let you know that we are working very hard to write as many grants as possible. There is a lot of grant funding available right now with COVID and ESAR money coming from federal through state. So the staff has been working diligently all summer. We have been able to write and receive $3,462,000 in grants this summer for early literacy. What we learned for early literacy, those students were most affected by COVID and learning loss. If we look at our data, the students in middle grades were not as affected as much as students in early grades because of the foundational skills. So we worked very hard to have summer learning camps. We provided transportation from state funding and a grant. We have received $2.5 million to redo our nurses' stations to play for nurses, and that saves us some money in general purpose account. We also will receive federal funding of $21 million through ESAR 1, 2, and 3 over the next three years. With that money, most of it has to be spent on learning loss because the intent of that money is to make up the learning that was lost during COVID. What we can do, we have to jump through lots of hoops, and I've told them, we're jumping through every last one because we need this. In rural systems, we need to spend some money on capital projects. So we intend, if we get approval, we have submitted the pre-approval to my friends on the right here. We'll appreciate that, $6 million to be spent on the community wing. And I have heard, why haven't we started? One reason we haven't started is I think it is financially responsible for us to try to use our funding from the federal government. In order to do that, we have to get approval before we can enter into contract with the architect. So if you're wondering why it hadn't started, as soon as we get approval, we will be able to move forward with that. So we want, we don't want to put that at risk by jumping the gun so far. So we want to wait and make sure we have, we've jumped through every hoop they want us to jump. Also, we have received approval for a virtual school, and I wanted to kind of explain that because I know there can be some controversy around, hey, why are you doing a virtual school? The reason is because we had, we lost 200 kids during COVID. We lost a homeschool. We lost to the state virtual school. We lost to private virtual schools. That's about $1.4 million, $7,000 a student. And I've had to find a way that we can hopefully bring some of those back. And so we applied for and secure a virtual school for grades three through eight next year. We will need 123 students to break even on that and get those students back. And so we have started that. We wrote that application and about two weeks got approval. We have hired a principal and she is moving forward. We're looking forward to that. That will help parents who still have some worries about COVID. That will help our medically fragile children as well. And also, students, you know, the staff at Central Office, I had them call every homeschool student that we had registered and say, hey, we offer, we are offering this now. Would you be willing to bring your student to sign up? So we're looking forward to that. The other thing, it will be business as usual in Bedford County schools next year. The state has said COVID protocols are left up to the district. So we will be pre-COVID restrictions, so there will be none. So we're going back to what we were before. We are offered a virtual school for anyone that has concerns. That will be a parent choice for them. A mask will be optional, but not required, and we will be going on field trips. It is time to educate our students. It is time for our students to experience what they experienced before, and unless anything drastically changes.
Yeah, I like that.
We will be back to normal. Okay? The other thing, last thing, we only have five open positions, and that's core content area positions. In order to move the needle with students in our district, we have to have certified teachers and great effective teachers in front of kids. Last year, throughout the year, you had 10 classrooms. We had 10 classrooms that did not have teachers in them. We had trouble recruiting. It is my goal to have a, and it's, I think that's a, you know, when I think about that, I think that's kind of a low goal, but it is what it is. So we're struggling in the state of Tennessee, but we only have five positions that are not filled at this point. And to think that last year we had 10 that went all year, I think we're in a pretty good position. But the state is offering lots of ways to get certified, and so any of you that are bored and want a teaching job, I could probably get you a license, especially my Good Math folks and my English Language Arts. Those are the five positions that we have left. I think that's all I have. I have enjoyed Bedford County. This is my second quarterly report, and I'm enjoying it and looking forward to many great years together.
Thank you. Good job. All right. Question, Commissioner Sweeney?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Garrett for doing what she said she would do in the interviews. I've had the opportunity to be in some meetings with her, and it's very unique to hear an educator voice her opinion. We were in a meeting with Broadbent with Commissioner Vic last, two days ago, and she asked some really important questions that you don't normally look at from the perspective we have, and she stepped up and it was very refreshing. I want to thank you for being involved.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Brent Smith.
Yeah, I want to echo that, Dr. Garrett. You've done a phenomenal job. I'm hearing nothing but great things in the community. We had a chance to speak a few weeks ago, and I really appreciate you taking the time to just talk to me and bring me up to speed about what's going on within the school system. I've got a, I've got two questions for you. First question is, you know, we face some unique challenges here. I think we're First question is, you know, we face some unique challenges here, I think we're running around, last time I checked, about 40% illegal aliens within our school systems. That's not a secret, that's a challenge, and I want to know what we can do as a county commission to help you, to help the schools, to get the funding you need, because I know that that's got to hurt you on graduation rates, that probably hurts you in some other areas, you know, language skills, et cetera. So first part of my question, what can we do to help you? And I'll let you answer that, and I'll give my second question.
First of all, I want to say I love all kids, so take nothing that I say as disrespectful to anyone, because I love all kids. But there is a fact that it does cost more to educate students who are low-income, who have English as a second language. Both of those require a lot of services. If you think about a student who receives ESL services, who also is low-income, you're stacking up your subgroups. And what we call subgroups, those students could count, what we say, count for us five times in some areas, it takes a lot of money to educate those. So those of you who are really working hard and to bring, you know, economic development to our county, to bring housing that will bring us more affluent, I'm trying to make sure, I'm sorry, I usually have just transparency, so take it for what it's worth. But those will help us in the school system, those efforts to bring housing that produces citizens that are productive citizens, and not a drain, because that can really affect our school system and our scores. And, and, hey, I grew up in poverty, here I am, so I definitely don't want anyone to think that I'm looking down on anyone, because I definitely wouldn't. I'm just telling you what the facts are. So any efforts that we have in helping us with CTE, with bringing, you know, tracking that housing and development, and also the ESL, one of the things that we need to do is, the state and government, federal government requires us, they're very specific on graduation rates, and very specific on when you have to test a child, and they have to be proficient. A student gets one year, they have to be proficient on their grade level. We need to work with legislators to get that changed, because I couldn't go in another country and be proficient on a grade-level test in one year. So those are the things that we need help with. But yes, it does, and I think you and I agree, that it is very costly, and we've got to think about that when we make decisions that are in the best interest on those different elements for our county.
Thank you for your transparency, and hold us accountable too on how we can help. If there's something that maybe you're thinking of that we haven't thought of as a commission, please let us know, because I think we're all open ears, we all want all of our kids to be educated. Second question, I think I know the answer, but I've got to ask you, critical race theory, is that something that's being sponsored within Bedford County schools at all, or is that a no-go, is that a, is that a, is that a no-start?
The board will not support it, and it also is banned, the governor has been very clear, it is banned with the state of Tennessee.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Commissioner Julie Sanders?
I just had a question, with the numbers dropping slightly, with the kids that have been homeschooled during the pandemic, do you foresee with some going into the virtual learning academy, do you see any need for more schools to be built to decrease any because of that?
Not because of the virtual school at all, we are using the wing at Cascade, we do, and we are taking steps to build a new elementary school and purchase land to get there. One of the critical elements that we have to look at on our five-year plan, our 10-year plan, is we have a couple of old schools that require more money to educate those students. If you look at the numbers right now, expenditures, it costs about 3,000 more to educate east-side student or a south-side student than it does to educate some of the newer schools like Learning Way and Harris Middle. So on our five and 10-year plan, we need to look at what we're doing. But right now, our main goal is to get students, we want to finish community, because we can do that, because with the federal money, and if anyone says, well, they only have, you know, I've heard it in the community, they only have one portable. But with this money, it will, you can use it for COVID, to, like, make schools bigger. It's a wise decision for us to do that with our money when we can do that, to, if we add that, I hope we don't ever have to deal with COVID again, but we could spread kids out more, that's a good use of our funds. But the second thing is, we've got to get kids out of portables.
Amen.
Our students do not have access to internet in our portables right now. So we have to choose which grade levels are you going to put in the portable, because they won't get to have internet. The other thing is safety, we want, I want, when I go to my office every day, I take it very seriously that I have 9,000 kids that I want to send home. And to think that I have some kids in portables that are not as secure as in buildings keeps me awake at night. So our number one goal is to get kids out of portables, and so more so than the virtual, those are the important elements.
Commissioner Gunn?
With the virtual school that you have coming up, are there going to be limits to the students that are, that are going to be able to attend that?
Yes, great question. We, we have very strict qualifications to get in there, it won't be just, I just don't feel like going to school, I'm gonna opt out. I think that's the easier plan. So to be in a virtual school, you have to have no less, no more than 10 absences for the previous year. You can't be under the 25th percentile, and the reason being, if you're under the 25th percentile in either reading or math, then you, you need to be at a school where you can have small group instruction in front of you, because that means you're behind. So anyone below that is not eligible to go, and also, we'll look at the report cards. So we want it to be effective, to be successful, it has to be effective, and so we put steps in place for that to happen, good question.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, run her through it, I thank you for coming. All right. Next was the election registry, we do have the report, but I don't see her in the audience. Highway Superintendent had his report, he had an incident, not able to be here tonight, and then up next is Property Assessor.
Mayor, can I make a comment about Mark Clanton for a second? I want to thank him, I don't know how many y'all realize, but the fair's coming up out at the Ag Center. Mark and his guys went out there today, graded, they gravelled. It's just phenomenal what they did out there for the fair, for the Ag Center, and on behalf of the Ag Board and as a commissioner, I want to thank Mark Clanton, because the work they did today out there is really going to be nice for the fair.
Absolutely, thank you for that. All right, Property Assessor.
We're finished with reappraisal, and we're starting all over again. We started our review July 1st, so we're out reviewing properties, still picking up new construction. We've had a little over 1,000 transfers since the first of the year, and I'll tell you right now, we're behind the eight ball already. Our values, they're coming in higher, the sales are coming in higher than what our values were just turned over at, some of them $50,000. I don't understand it, it's scary, I don't know how long it's going to continue, I think it's, it's going to continue, you know, on for a ways, but I don't know. I've never seen anything like it. County boards, county board did a phenomenal job. We did have informal hearings, which meant people could call in and talk to the people who worked on the reappraisal prior to the county boards. So county boards, I only had four residential property owners to appeal. From those four owners, they had a total of 27 parcels. On the commercial side, I had three tax reps, which is typical, and I really thought I might have a few more, but, and then two residential people who had commercial properties that appealed, so a total of about 37 commercial properties that were appealed. Tax rate dropped 69 cents, you all held to the certified rate, and you're able to, to work your budget with that, and I commend you for that, because that's a tough job, so. Other than that, if anybody has questions?
Questions for the Property Assessor? All right, well, thank you so much. All right, and then I believe last is the Register of Deeds, and I see him right here in front of me.
Good evening, and normally I'm, I'm on that side of the stage entertaining this side. But first of all, I want to say thank you to Mayor Graham, John T. Bobo, and ladies and gentlemen of this commission, all of our Bedford County elected officials, and even our city officials. This report I'm fixing to give is a overview of what is happening in our city, people want to come to Shelbyville. It's un-fenomenal, like Rhonda said, the housing market. On your sheet is the last quarter, and you'll see the totals there, the middle is the year-end for 2021, and then the ending is 19 and 20, so you can compare. So we had 14,957 documents this last year, recording $2,727, most in history of Bedford County. And you can see that's almost 867,000 more than the year before that. I want to praise my team at work, we have worked in conditions through COVID. We've had to change our way of life, way of business, and we made it work, and you can see the results in the report, and they just keep coming. And we've had a great year, and I thank you for your support in our office.
Questions? How much of that, the question is, how much of that money do we get to keep on this 27?
Well, I didn't put that part in there.
2,000, uh, 2,000, 2,000, 2,700?
2.4%.
Okay. And the state is the one that dictates?
Then it trickles back down supposedly, and I think.
Right, and so, now, that used to be a larger number, and they've cut it, so do we expect to get that back at some point?
Well, we tried, and it's like a $6 billion takeaway, and that's not, it's not going to happen, yes.
Absolutely.
And one other thing I would like to mention, everybody hears about all this fraud, cyber, cyber attacks. I have in place, we're fixing to spread, spread the word to the public, we have a free to the public property fraud that they can log into, put their email, and how many times they sign their name on a legal document. And if that name pops up, and somebody comes in and tries to record a document, that constituent will get a email that that has come through. If it's somebody that's went through John T.'s office and recorded a deed, they know they're recorded a deed, but if, Chad, if you get one, and you didn't do anything, then you've got a red flag that somebody's tried to tamper with your property. So this is going to be free for our citizens.
Would you mind maybe sending an email out to the complete commission, so we can therefore send it out to the constituents? Because that's, that's a great, that's a great asset that your office has.
Hopefully, we'll have that up and running in August, so, so that's, that's coming very soon.
Coming soon, all right, well, thank you so much, any other?
Johnny, I have a question for you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
And this was probably for Rhonda and Donna and everyone else, with the increase in business, how many more employees have you hired?
None.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, we're nearing the end, folks, and we're under announcements, I have one here that's, the Bedford County Fair starts July the 19th, and it's through the 24th, so come out and support the fair. They weren't able to have it last year due to COVID, but they're planning to do it in a big way this year. Is there other announcements? Commissioner Gunn?
Honorable Mayor Chad Graham, ladies and gentlemen of Bedford County Commission, it's been a long and difficult decision, but the time has come that I must tender my resignation as Bedford County 6th District Commissioner. My resignation will be effective August 31st. I understand that my term would not expire until the 2022 election year, however, due to my upcoming wedding, I will be moving out of my district, which is District 6. My decision is solely based on the Tennessee Code annotated 55102B, as it states that members shall reside within and be qualified voters of the districts that they represent. Therefore, it is necessary for me to step down from my position in August of 2021, as I will no longer be living in my current district. It has been a pleasure to serve on the Bedford County Commission and to serve the citizens of the 6th District in the role of Commissioner. I am proud of all that we have accomplished together in the last three years, and I have no doubt that the Bedford County Commission will continue these successes into the future. If there is anything that I can do to assist with the transition, I am most certainly happy to do so, thank you.
Is there other comments, announcements? Commissioner Parrish, did you want?
I don't see him, Wyatt Hopper?
All right, do you remember the date, it's the? Okay. All right, any other announcements? All right, hearing none, motion, motion to adjourn?